All right, well, I'll get the meeting, call the meeting to order for Monday, June 24th, at the Arundel Municipal Building, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. In the name of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And on the agenda, I do have a short RSU finance report. Any other, anything else, any other changes to the agenda?
Not from me, no.
Make a motion, we approve as amended.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, you approve, all in favor? Public forum, public comment on non-agenda items? Anything? I have something. Today, on Facebook, a mother reported that she and her children or child had gone out to our playground out here to play, and that they found ticks on the equipment. I said I would mention it tonight, and somebody else came in and said that if we're going to do anything about ticks, we might want to contact Mainly Ticks, because apparently they have a process that can be used against the ticks that's protective of the children. I don't know if that's a company we used over at the Ball Field or not, but...
No, that would be somebody different, I think. I don't think we used them.
You want to just look up Mainly Ticks and perhaps have them go out and check? Anything else on the public forum?
Speaking of that, I was asked about picnic tables out there, so I asked Jen about it. If there was an opportunity to put some picnic tables for people to sit down, and she said that she is working with somebody, there's a company here in town that was going to donate.
Yes, we're having one donated. They've already come and taken a look at the site.
Yeah.
They're donating it on behalf of the oldest citizen from Arundel.
Oh, nice.
And they'll be placing, it's going to be metal, green in color, it won't have a, it'll have that mesh top in, so the rain will go through.
Right.
And we looked at a location for it. At least we'll get one to start with.
Yep.
For the oldest resident, that's Eva Bynne.
Yes, yep.
Okay, good. We'll try that one and see if it works and go from there. Okay. Approve the minutes of June 10th.
Motion approved as submitted.
Motion's made to approve. And seconded, all in favor? All righty. Committee and board reports, I did go to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Director has prepared the RSU budget with the amounts that will go to the state. I think the state has, what, 23? 23 different articles that they, so they have changed the amounts on that report to meet what was voted on at the RSU meeting and at our voting for budget. And that is the report that's ready to go to the state. And I brought a copy, so he has it, if you have any questions. Okay, managers' report.
Yeah, it's just a follow-up. If I was going to receive any more information from MDOT, I know that our representatives, along with the sheriff, have made their inquiries to the Commissioner. I have yet to hear back from the Commissioner relative to our concerns on speed on the 111 corridor. I had the opportunity last week to speak with a selectman labby in my office again, and I didn't realize until I rode out there, but from Bitterford it's 40 miles an hour and through a small portion of of Arundel before it turns to 50. So I don't think it's a big stretch for us to really be asking for the accommodation that we want in terms of speed. So I did have a company, I think it's Fiber Materials, indicated, they called me because they were seeing activity going on and wondering what was going to happen. Some of their, some of their employees were concerned that they were going to get slowed down coming to work, and I had to explain to them what was going on in reference to the middle turn lane. And he was, he was very appreciative that we got back to him. He was going to make sure the staff knew that. So as soon as I know, or if I hear anything from the Commissioner, I certainly will let you folks know. We'll keep pushing along and see where it takes us. The next thing I had was just to let you folks know that we went ahead and sent our floodplain management ordinance to the state. It goes to the National Flood Insurance Program. Sue Baker is the representative for the state of Maine, reviewing these ordinances. And from what I understand, the ordinances get approved at the local level based on the new mapping and the new ordinance, and then it gets reviewed by the feds to ensure that it is in compliance with their standards. So we're waiting for Sue to return to make sure that ours meets those requirements. I do know that Lee J took the time to put that document together, along with the planning board, to make sure that we had the necessary requirements in it. I think there was a, from the federal government, I think there was a boilerplate type of ordinance that you could follow.
Yeah, the document that we have.
To ensure that we got it done correctly.
Yeah. They got to prove their document that they gave us, that we copied, that we pointed back to them.
Dan, I think you're right.
Par for the course.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. So anyways, we're just waiting back from them at this particular point. The next thing, I think, and I think I shared it with you, I received a, I don't know if you folks received it by the mail. Okay, so the copy that you have in your packet was sent to the Select Board to my office on a complaint of noise near, near the Agway on Route 111. I guess there's a business next door that is an automotive auto tuning business that they're complaining about excessive noise at a period of time during the day. The letter is really asking us what we're going to do, and I just wanted to let you folks know where we are in terms of our review of this complaint. Again, this is their information. We don't know if it's actually accurate or not. We have, both the code officer and I have spoken, the code officer's been in contact with the attorney to see what we should be doing as our next phase. And I have to tell you, our noise ordinance is weak at best, in my view. And I expressed that today to the Planning Board Chair, just saying that it's something that needs to be looked at. When you read it, it's less than a full page. And there's, to me, there's discrepancies in reference to exceeding noise levels and how it's written. So I'm really waiting to get a little more information from the attorney. We tried to reach her today, we just couldn't, we were playing a little phone tag, so we didn't get that done, but we're aware of it. And we'll take our steps that necessary in order to try to accommodate it. I think my initial thought is that the town should at least put notice to the to the business that's being complained about, so at least they have it, they're aware of it. I'm not sure, based on the letter that I received, that they even have any knowledge that that their business is causing excessive noise to their neighbors. So just, we'll just keep working along and see where it takes us. But I wanted you to be aware of it and at least have the letter. Sometimes it's very difficult when your first complaint comes from an attorney's office, as opposed from the property owner to the town to see if we can do it locally. Once the attorney gets involved, I think it sort of steps it up to another level that we have to address.
So have they ever come to us about the noise, or they went directly to their attorney?
As far as I know, I've never been informed of it. In my 10 years being here, believe it or not, I've been here almost 10 years. In my 10 years being here, I think this is the third noise complaint that I've received.
Well, this is loud, because it scared the daylights out of me one day when I drove by. And they were dynoing a car. I was like, it scared me, I didn't know what it was.
Oh, okay.
I really thought it was a jet coming by or something.
Oh, no kidding?
It's loud.
Yeah.
It really is.
Yeah. I don't know if there's anything that can be done in terms of maybe doors down and insulating the walls and things to that nature, but the way the ordinance is written, this is a level specified may be exceeded by 10 dBA for a single 15-minute period a day. Now, when they're dynoing cars, that may be, what, a couple minutes, Dan? You know, so are they ever getting close to a standard? And then we would have to actually be on-site, taking a reading, addressing it to the, to the to the standard to make sure that they are or are not in violation. So it's, I mean, I think they're feel-good ordinances, but in the end of the day, they're very hard to enforce.
We found that out with Bentley.
Yes.
Yep. What's that?
We found that out with Bentley. Remember, we had some meters down there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we had, yeah, and I think that was before my time, because
Yep.
when I was here, the campground that was up Route 1 towards Kennybunk was complaining about the noise. So, and then I've had one other noise complaint, and it's...
Well, we had complaints from, what's his name, paving there, from the neighbors who were starting his trucks like early in the morning.
Yes.
You know, that kind of...
Yeah. So I mean, you know, it's a hard nut to crack, you know, and so we'll keep working on it and see where it takes us. The next thing, Mr. Madam Chairman, is that we received a ballot election form from MMA for the Legislative Policy Committee. They've forwarded two names for recommendation. On the back of the form, they also provide, I think they provide on the back, and I may not have put it on your profile, I have it in the screen form, a little background of both of the, both of the folks. From what I can gather, the LPC Senate District 32 area is covered by Arundel, Bitterford, Dayton, Hollis, and Lyman. And Bitterford appoints one of the members, so there are three members appointed. One gets appointed by Bitterford, so it doesn't even have to be on the list. So the names forwarded are the ones they're recommending, and I would recommend that that they, that we sign a ballot and send it on its way.
But we only have to vote for one? Just one of those two names?
No, I think you vote for both of those names. I think there's three folks, and so you... Oh, no, it says vote for one. Bitterford appoints one member. So you could vote for another Bitterford counselor, and then it'd put a Bitterford person in, or you could vote for Ms. Hoffman, who's a Select Board member from the town of Hollis. Now, and if you don't want to take any action on this tonight, I don't believe this has to be back until August 1st. They have a whole month. If you want me to gather any further information relative to it.
So if we, if we vote for this individual from the city of Bitterford, and Bitterford appoints one member, does that mean that Bitterford will have two?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what it means.
Yeah.
Do we want to wait on this, or do we want to recommend one of the two? I like to see different views, so I would...
I'll make a motion, we select Mary Hoffman.
Okay, motions were made to select Mary Hoffman. Do I have a second on that?
I'm ahead of conflict, so I have to be careful.
Yeah.
My firm represents the city of Bitterford.
Let me just read a little bit about her profile. I don't think you have it on the back. She serves as Select Board in the town of Hollis for the past four years. She served three years on the Budget Committee prior to that. She is, when she was serving as Select Board, she assisted in writing marijuana, opt-in ordinance to allow for all services for adult use of medical marijuana. She has served on the LPC for this past term, so she's serving, would like to serve again, would like to continue her service, keep abreast of the issues that the legislature is working on and monitor actions results on major municipal issues such as fire, EMS, recruitment, retention, general assistance, funding, and public safety.
Okay, well, Dan has made the motion. I'm only standing in for the chairman tonight, so can I second that motion?
Sure.
I'll second that.
So I have a question.
Yep.
So because your firm represents Bitterford, you see this as a conflict?
Well, I know Mark Sore pretty well as a result, so I mean...
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments? All in favor? And one abstention.
Okay. I'll send it on down, you guys can sign it down here, and I'll fill out the rest after.
Okay. Let's try that. All righty.
We all set? The next thing I had was a payroll warrant policy for the upcoming fiscal year. As you recall, you've provided this flexibility on, for one of your Select Board members to come in on when the payroll doesn't coincide with your meeting. So it's been very helpful to us, and I would recommend that the policy be signed again.
I make a motion, we approve the border selectments policy for the payroll warrant fixed for the year 2025.
Do I have second by Phil? Any comments, other than the fact that maybe we should make this the Select Board's policy? Since everything else is Select Board, so adopted at Select Board meeting, Select Board policy, and any place where it says selectmen, majority of the Select Board.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Next meeting, we'll sign it.
Yeah, we'll have to wait till the next meeting to sign it, and we'll go ahead and make those changes. We're going to have, yeah, okay. Sorry, I didn't pick up that. And next, I have the, per the charter, the annual appointments for FY 2025. There's a slate of folks here with the retirement, upcoming retirement of Reynold Tardif, EMA Director, and the Health Officer, remain vacant until we fill those positions, and I'll come forward with something, but I would recommend that we approve the slate of offices as presented.
Motion approved.
Motion's made by Tom, seconded by Phil.
Yep.
Any discussion? And all in favor? There you go.
Thanks. Also, at your last meeting, we were talking about whether or not we wanted to continue our relationship with the Greater Portland Council of Governments, and specifically for the Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation System, or CACS. You asked me to reach out to see if there is additional information to ensure that the entire, the entire town of Arundel would be covered under the CACS agreement. I've been given information from, from Chris Chop that indeed, the new agreement will include the entire town and not just a sliver of town. So that sort of had a better feeling for me in reference to continuing our relationship with them. If we weren't part of that, we would have to put our, put our eggs in and ask for approval with the Hittery Area Transportation, Area Comprehensive Transportation System, or CACS, which I don't think, if you look at the geographic location, we may be a satellite to that, because I don't think Kennybunk and Kennybunk Port are part of that CACS Transportation Committee right now. I think it ends in North Berwick, so it would sort of isolate us. So with this, with our involvement with, with CACS, it would provide us the opportunity to be heard on certain types of transportation issues that we would like to have addressed. It would provide me or anybody who wants to go to those meetings, a voting member of of actions that would be taking place. So I think in the long run, it would benefit us, even though according to this, at this point, it doesn't look like they have any subregionable, reasonable projects that are happening within our area at this time. It looks like there won't be paving resources allowed in our area until it looks like current year 28. So that's where it puts us. At least it gets us into the planning purposes and perhaps provides us a voice of some things that we would like to get done. I don't, not of this one, no. No, regionally, I think it's just the way it's set up. I can't remember if they're part of CACS or not. I don't think they are. I think it ends in Wells and goes to North Berwick, so... So what's your pleasure? I mean, obviously, it's going to cost us $3,000 to be a member of this group. I think they look at alternative transportation matters, you know, they look at alternatives to bus routes and things along those lines as well. But, you know, Dan, to be, you know, you make a good argument whether or not it's going to benefit us at this particular point. You know, I just go back to the letter they sent us on the 28th, and again, I think that's what you did, and look at the potential advantages, and then maybe the potential disadvantages in order to get involved, and I leave it up to you folks as to whether or not you think that's a benefit for us. I look at, it appears that they want $3,000 for current year 24, and then that would mean they probably want it for '26, '27. And then we're into '28, and then we may not get anything in '28. So we have 3, 6, 9. We may have $12,000 into this with no benefits coming our way. So that would be the sticker for me.
It's my point.
What's your pleasure?
Dan, I think we pass.
What's that?
I'm with you, I think we pass.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass.
Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor? Yeah, I think it's a case that we pass this year.
Okay. All some other information down there? And finally, before you do the payroll and payroll warrants, I just wanted to let you know that I did provide you a copy of the findings of facts and conclusions that were done by the Board of Assessment Review. I thought it was important for you to see the due diligence that that committee did in terms of going through that abatement that was requested. And I think they've set the stage moving forward that they'll be very judicious in their review of these matters if they do come up again. I know that we have one more that may be coming our way. I provided that applicant the information, it's already been approved, because their appeal is similar to that. Now, we're going to try to schedule them, and they have every right to come forward and provide other documentation if they think it's important for that. But we won't do that until after the tax assistant comes back from her medical leave. So, and they are, they're understanding of that, and so isn't the Board, so...
And would you also mention that the office will be closed Thursday?
Yep, yeah, we're closing at noon time on Thursday. Yep, yeah, we're closing at noon time on Thursday for end-of-year books. They're going to do the financial pieces, they want to wrap that all up. So we'll give them that half a day to complete that. We did the same thing last year, if you recall. We closed for that to happen. I did send that to all our department heads, and I did send it to John Bell to be posted. And as I understand, I think one of our staff members placed something on your Arundel chatter Facebook page today to ensure people understood that.
It just didn't say on our Arundel chatter that it was for year end.
Well, somebody asked why, and they replied back. They replied back.
I didn't see the why here.
Yep.
So I think.
I thought this was very thorough.
I did too. I thought it was very good. Well, that's what we expect from those attorneys when you're paying them big money to get that stuff done.
We gonna do election of officers and committees next meeting?
Yeah, that would be my plan, to do election of officers. I think.
I think I'll have a little away from Jason.
I think our next meeting coincides with Jason, you know, Bean returning, so I think he'll be here.
Yeah.
For the next meeting, so it'd be nice to have him forward.
He's never here.
Yeah.
That's not true.
No. Payroll and payable warrants?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded to sign the payroll and payable warrants, all in favor? There we go. Phil see them right there. Oh, yep, he does. I thought our town meeting went very well. Even though sometimes we would call the school board.
Yeah, I got a couple items.
Oh, okay, yep.
Surprise, surprise, huh?
Yeah.
I don't think it was our, I think it was our last meeting, or maybe, yeah. You had a discussion with Consolidated, or Consolidated had reached out to you, whatever. Anything more of that? Have they started doing any work?
No.
No.
No, they've sort of disappeared again, so. I'm happy that you bring it up, because I'll make another inquiry to the contact I have.
Bentley's has been made aware of their October events that they need to come in?
Yeah, we had a discussion on that, and they'd be more than happy to come in. I think they're trying, what they're going to try to do with their next. Application is to coincide it with their license in their activities. Which I think it got out of hand there for a while, and they didn't change their, they would like to prefer to get their license back on to the. Schedule that they normally had, and I think. When I talked to Sarah on the phone, she said that I think COVID. May have screwed it up just a little bit, so they'd like to get back on that, so that's their goal for the next year.
Good. And do you know what's going on over, what used to be Hollies? I know Jay Brothers bought that, and they were talking about maybe putting another gas station or something back, but they weren't sure. Have you heard anything?
I have not heard anything, and I don't believe it's come before the planning board.
Well, Ann was aware of what they were doing. I talked to Ann, I don't know, a couple months ago. I'd asked a question, because somebody had asked. I didn't know if you had heard anything.
I have not heard.
Doing a lot of work there, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want me to inquire about that and get back to you?
Plus they removed some tanks, I would guess, huh?
Yeah, and I, and I, it looked like they were putting tanks back in, but I couldn't tell, because they had it all. They had steel all around, and it looked like they were possibly putting tanks back in.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, so what Ann had said, I don't know, a couple months ago, was that Jay Brothers bought it. They were cleaning the place up, and they were making a decision on what to do with it.
I see.
Could possibly be a gas station or a convenience store. They also bought the house right next to it, so they bought the whole lot. And they were just trying to figure out what to do.
Well, I'll do some more inquiries. If I get anything else, I'll send you something out, yeah. Well, I'm sure that the citizens would be reaching out.
Asking about it, I mean, they've been asked like a whole bunch of times, and I just got tired of answering this. Somebody the other day posted and said it's an nail salon.
Dan did contact me today about the compactor and the cans, so. Just let you know, they were supposed to be in this week. Terry reached out to them. Today, left a message. Nobody returned his call just yet, so as soon as I know, we'll let you know, but. Excuse me, their goal when they. Was to have the cans and the compactor in sometime this week.
Hey, I do have one more thing. Do you know what the two. Two lots on Route 1, one is near the cottages, and the other one is down below Technology Drive. On the right, what's going into those two places? Somebody on Facebook has been complaining that there's a lot of blasting going on.
No, I do not know.
I'll call Ian tomorrow.
Sure. Haven't heard about that. Usually I don't hear about it unless somebody's complaining about it, but in that regard, I did not hear.
Yeah, I told them to contact Ann, because the blasting, there's a blast plan that goes on, and they need to notify neighbors within a certain radius, so. Anyways, I make a motion, we adjourn 7:35.
All in second? Second, motion's made and seconded, all in favor? There we go, thank you.